Stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Right over there.
Oh, I couldn't see it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a reminder that Norton Media is recording the meetings, so if anybody else is, we just need to know that ahead of time. And I guess we're gonna start with the Student Excellence Awards.
Yes, we are.
See some people out here, I know.
I wasn't really sure how this was set up tonight, but I'm gonna come this way, over next to Mr. Sheedy, if that's okay. The first student that I'm excited to recognize tonight is Carolyn Powers. I'm really excited to share with you guys all about Kara. She holds a 4.8 GPA and is ranked number one in her class this year. She has taken numerous advanced placement level courses each year and takes great pride in her academics, receiving the Academic Excellence Award in English, Science, and Math her junior year. Carolyn is an active member of several honor societies, including the National Honor Society, Math, Science, English, History, Spanish, and Business. She holds leadership positions of Environmental Director for the Science Honor Society and is present President of the Business Honor Society. I saw her last night at the induction. Carolyn is also co-president of the debate team and participates in DECA, in which she is Vice President of Public Relations and Social Media. In addition to her rigorous academics and extracurriculars, Carolyn is a dedicated gymnast. She's also cheering for the state this year, right? She also coaches gymnastics for students ages three to 10 and has spent time volunteering for a summer gymnastics program. Carolyn also stays active by running spring track. She's able to balance all of her commitments with Grace and has even picked up a job at the Tropical Smoothie Cafe this year. Carolyn is majoring in Environmental Studies and has career aspirations to be an environmental and animal rights lawyer. She is a strict vegan and wants to dedicate her career to helping animals. Congratulations, Kara. She's a student of academic excellence from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So I'm gonna ask Mrs. Winsper to take the picture. And then I see Mom in the crowd, so she won't come up right now. There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. All right, the next person I would like to recognize is Ms. Matia McIntyre. All right, Matia is involved, dedicated, and kind with unrivaled energy, maturity, and thoughtfulness. She has set and pursues clear educational goals, teaching, while continuing to excel in realms she loves such as swimming. Academically, Matia enjoys challenging herself in the highest level classes. Her latest weighted GPA is a 4.3. As a senior, she is taking rigorous courses as well as interning with teachers to experience the ins and outs of her chosen career path. Matia is an active member of the Student Council, holding the position of Secretary. She's a member of the National Honor Society as well as Spanish, History, and English Honor Societies. I saw her last night, too. Additionally, Matia is a proud member of the swim team and cross-country team, serving as a captain for both teams. Congratulations, Matia. And all your siblings. All right, come on up, McIntyre crew. All right, Gracie, nice job. Wanna hold it for her? All right. All right. Next is Calvin Borgida. Come on up, Calvin. All right, Calvin is one of Norton's most active students among the student community and is always there to make your day a little bit better. I like to do that, right? Calvin is the president of the Kindness Club, captain of the volleyball team for the past two seasons, and has been instrumental in bringing back Norton's unified basketball team. Calvin belongs to several honor societies. Additionally, Calvin was chosen to participate in a core training leadership conference through the Massachusetts Interscolactic Athletic Association at Norton High School as Norton High School's representative to retrieve training in developing relational leadership skills. That's awesome. During his time in high school, Calvin has always taken and excelled at the most rigorous classes available to him each school year. This year, he has taken on the additional challenge of taking Adidas Science through our virtual high school program. The other thing that is not included in Calvin's bio is that he is our intern at the superintendent's office doing a lot of the business things because you want to be in... Congratulations, Calvin. Mrs. Winsper, get one of you and I together. Hold on. We're ready, Karen. All right, I'll have Mom and Dad come on up. Yes, I do.
And I'll share these with the kids.
Okay.
All students, so.
Thank you. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, I have Madeline Dunlop. Come on up, Maddie. This is the Superintendent's Award of Excellence. Maddie is an incredible, goal-driven, resilient young woman who has had the lofty career goal of becoming a radiologist. Maddie has a deep love for learning about the sciences and Spanish. Due to Maddie's diligent and resolute nature towards her academics, she has received exceptional grades in all of her classes, commenting in a 4.77 GPA. Amazing. Maddie is involved with six honor societies and has a leadership role in the two societies which she has the most passion for, science and Spanish. She is the president of the Spanish Honor Society, where she loves to spread her love for Spanish, and is the historian of the Science Honor Society. Maddie has been a four-year member of the cheer team and was named captain in her senior year. And you're a flyer, right, Maddie? All right, amazing. Congratulations. Hold it, and then it looks like your family in the crowd, too? All right. Mike, stop teasing us. Grandma, Dad, wanna come up? Is that your grandmother? Does your grandmother wanna come up, too?
Oh, yes.
I know, they're low to the ground.
Congratulations, babe.
It's crazy to think that I've known all of you guys since you were super little, so I'm super proud of each of you. It's awesome. Nice job, you guys. Try not to cry, you know I always cry. I know, well, I've known them since they were little, so it's hard not to.
Two of them are family friends of mine, actually. So, one is my next-door neighbor and very, very good friend. Playing golf and skiing with her husband all the time. And the other one, my wife has known Matia's mom for considerably longer than we've been married. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, great job, guys. Don't feel like you guys need to stay. You can, but don't feel like you have to.
Certainly don't. Thank you.
We're talking EM Pass, so I wouldn't stay.
Bye. Nice to see you guys. All right, so coming up next is Masque Pathfinders Award.
All right, so I'm going to ask Ryan and Christina and Karen to come join us in the front row, please.
So these two wonderful people are part of the Technology Department. Christina and I were actually hired the same year, in 2014, so this is year 10 for both of us. And Ryan joined us just two years ago. This is his third year. And I have been involved in Masque, which is Massachusetts Computer Using Educators. It's an organization, you know, statewide organization for instructional technologists. And every year, they award pathfinders for people who have an impact on instructional technology or educational technology. And I was very fortunate to receive notice that these two were the first recipients as a team. I had nominated them just because of the impact that they have had on our staff and ultimately the students of Norton and as well as their regional and national kind of experience presenting. So it is, you know, a great honor for us in Norton to have these two recognized as the first team. It's one of those things that they have demonstrated leadership, dedication, as well as having an impact right across pre-K to 12. Like, they work with everybody in the district. So I am very proud to work with them and very honored to have you acknowledge them tonight. So we would like Dr. O'Neil to take a picture with them.
And then you should take one, too. Should we take one, the four of us?
Yeah, why don't you do that? Yeah, Karen, you should definitely be in the picture.
Yes, probably.
Want me to take the picture?
Yes. Shouldn't trust her with her camera.
Don't touch my camera.
I'll take one.
All right, you guys ready?
Thank you very much.
I think it's important to note that the Technology Department just is really such an amazing, amazing team. Ryan and Christina work so closely with our math and literacy coaches as well. They are always working on curriculum initiatives, helping teachers to integrate technology in a really meaningful way in our classrooms. And we are better as a district because of them. So this award was so well-deserved, and thank you to Mrs. Winsper, who is a former Pathfinder herself, for her work with the team and for nominating them so that they had this recognition.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I'll tell you, back however many years ago, I was nervous when Christina, when they said that she was coming out of the classroom. Because of course, you taught both of my boys, and I'm like, she's one of the best teachers. I was nervous when they told us that, but it seems like you've kind of found your niche and you guys are doing great things. So thank you so much. All right. All right, so I guess we have to vote to approve the minutes of the October 23rd and 26th open session meetings. So has everybody had a chance to look at the October 23rd minutes?
Yes. One change to those.
Yeah, there is a change.
Yeah.
I wasn't there at the start, so it would've been opened by probably Dinesh.
Yeah.
Okay.
The call order was me, not Dan.
Yeah.
And Sherry, were you there at the start, too? Because of that?
I came late.
Okay.
Didn't I?
Well, that was at the LG meeting.
Yeah. Yes, okay.
I was late.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make that change.
Fine, no problem.
Everybody else good?
Yeah.
And then just a question, so I'm assuming the 401 on the Olympiad, someone was not there yet.
Yeah, I think that Dan wasn't there yet.
Because the next one, there was a 401, so it's one.
Yeah, I walked in the middle of that discussion, so I didn't.
Perfect, cool.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the minutes for the October 23rd meeting?
With the changes noted.
With the changes noted, yep. The second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we have the October 26th minutes. Does anyone have a chance to look at that? Any questions or comments on that one?
Same question on that one, the 301. Was that... Did you walk in late on that one, Sherry, at the LG? I know Dinesh started that meeting, but the...
Yeah, but I was...
I didn't think we had voted on anything before he got there, so...
I can't, no, you know what? You might have, if you started that, because I came in when Mr. Higgins was president.
Yeah.
So I must have been...
Yep.
...very late for that one. Yeah. So just that change.
Absolutely.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the October 26th minutes with those, with that change noted? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
So are we gonna sign these ones or no, because we're changing them?
Why don't we hold on to those, and I'll bring you the fresh copies next time.
All right, so I guess...
These are non-signed, right?
Those are the ones that we are approving, that we just approved.
These are the ones, okay. Should we go back to you?
I'll take them, yeah, okay.
Because we can't sign the other ones, right? We can sign the 26th.
No, so we're changing that one, too.
Actually, no, that one was ready.
We were just clarifying that you...
Because I wasn't here, Dan.
Yeah, we can... For the warrants, Sherry, okay, then we can sign the 26th.
Oh, yeah, 26.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so the warrants, I guess that's me, I'm up. I've reviewed and approved the following warrants, the school expense warrants, October 26, 2023, And then the school payroll warrants, October 19, 2023, for $1,165,194.85. I wish to enter them into public record. Student rep update.
All right, so Gabby is unfortunately not here, but I wanted to give you a quick update on the hallway decorating. So English was dethroned. History actually won. English, we're not gonna talk about that, but they didn't do very well at all.
How much do you really feel?
History was definitely the best, but let's get to the real update here. The high school has a fun, short week of class competitions coming up. On Monday night, classes will face off in the Powder Football Tournament. In school on Wednesday will be hallway decorating contests, followed by the prep rally. Classes will compete in various competitions during the prep rally. Also, Friday after Thanksgiving is the annual junior/senior semi-hormal. From the Yale, students have done a great job with PBIS, earning hashtags galore, where we have already handed out over 150 books for handing in 50 hashtags for a coin for the book vending machine and have earned their second sitting anywhere in the cafeteria for their excellent behavior. We have done close to 150 Good News Calls of the Day so far. Our LLT, Lancer Learning Time, RTI, Response Intervention Block for our IMTSS have been running very smoothly since the start of the year, where students are getting the academic support they need each day during the school day as they rotate through different standards and groupings based on their assessment scores. One facet of our IMTSS Tier 2 interventions for students behaviorally has been very successful this past year with our check-in and checkout system for points students have been earning throughout their day. Students on the CI/CO system have been doing so incredibly well. Next Wednesday, prior to Thanksgiving break, our HAPG will be hosting Annual Anything But a Backpack Day, which was so creative and fun last year. From the Middle School, NMS has been engaged in World Kindness Week all this week. We have encouraged students to send kindness cards to one another during lunch and are asking all students to wear yellow tomorrow as the designated color for kindness. NMS is gearing up for our annual Turkey Carnival, which has been a tradition at NMS for more than 30 years. The Turkey Carnival is a fun eight event designed to raise funds and spur donations of canned goods, which are then distributed to local food pantries and other charitable institutions. Last year, we raised close to $2,000 as a school, and we are hoping to exceed that this year. A select group of students recently traveled with Officer Robichaud and Mr. Kramer to film a PSA and learn about emergency services over at Seamrec in Foxborough. Students were able to speak with dispatchers and learn all about what is involved with responding to emergency calls and how cellphone technology can be used to assist those in need of help. NMS has successfully completed our fall sports season, and we are now gearing up for winter sports, having just competed our basketball tryouts for both teams. That's all we have for you.
That's great, thank you. Anybody have anything? All right, opening of school remarks. Dr. John Marcus.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you so much for coming over to JCS. It's great to see you in our library. This is, each year, we have a theme at JCS. Last year was the Year of Adventure, and we had lots of great adventures. This year is the Year of Celebrations. The idea is really to celebrate both local and world celebrations all throughout the year. So we're taking both fun kinds of things, like the other day was Pickle Day. So, not Pickleball Day, but Pickle Day, and celebrating that, so fun things like that, all the way to our sort of big things. Our theme team has been planning many celebrations this year, from our traditional concerts, our cultural assemblies, traditions like the JC Solomonese Day and Polar Express, our Martin Luther King Day celebration, and of course, many SPO events. And then also this year, we're adding to our Year of Celebrations a couple of new things. We've been collaborating with the Norton Outdoor Center for the last year, and we have a new idea this year called Starry Night, which will be a midwinter night where we invite families to go out to their big field. And we'll have folks with telescopes and things like that and have the kids learn all about the stars, and families have some hot cocoa and things like that out in the cold. So it's kind of fun. And then we're also continuing our Days of Adventure with the NOC. So that's been, that was, it was wonderful last year, and we're excited to do that again this year. And then you saw as you came up the stairs that our large-scale art project last year was turning the lobby and the hallway up here into more of a celebration of the school. So you see the big sea turtle and the other animals that represent the units around the building. And then on the other side of that are the words for our values, the nine values, and they were made by sea turtles that each of the kids painted, and we formed them into the letters of those words. So that was our big art project last year with the artist Jess Tracy. This year, we've moved on to this room. And our plan is all up here above, in this two-foot, two-and-a-half-foot space at the top of the library. We're going to be hopefully working with artist Joshua Weiner, who's a mosaic muralist. And the kids will be working on a mosaic mural that wraps around that celebrates the natural environment of Norton and JCS and the love of reading and literacy. And so he does a really nice job of working with the students to design what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna be, and then working with individual kids. We'll have lots of parent volunteers and things like that. And that will be coming up hopefully in January, February. We applied for a few different grants, and we're pleased that Need so far has said yes. Our SPO obviously will hopefully be supporting us. And then we've also looked to the Mass Cultural Council for their support, too. So that's gonna be a big, exciting project that changes this room from kind of, you know, very stark white to something that's really colorful, that sort of pops and says something about who we are as a school and our community. So looking forward to it.
That's great, thank you. I said to Dinesh on the way in...
This room is land.
I spent a lot of hours in this library volunteering for both of my kids, and it could use a little spitting up, but I'll tell you, walking in the front door, as I said to him, it really looks amazing in this building. It's a big difference from when my kids were here so many years ago. But it's nice to come home to this school, for sure. Yeah, a lot of special memories here. Thank you. Anything else? Do you guys have anything, questions or anything? Great, thanks so much. Appreciate it. All right, next up is Sarah's Village presentation. Welcome back again.
Thank you. Thanks for having us back.
Yeah, of course.
Must be because of Cynthia.
So while we wait for this to warm up, I mean, again, most of the folks here at this table know Cynthia and Mark and the work they've done for us here, supporting our mental health, some of our mental health initiatives, working with their foundations, Sarah's Village. I'm not gonna try to steal too much of their thunder, but they've been super supportive with our continued work with EPIONE Health and Wellness, offering, again, I don't want to steal your thunder here, but support to a number of students and families here across the district that I just were not able to get mental health services in a timely manner or due to insurance or other, you know, factors that we right now are seeing with the mental health situation. So they've been really important in that work and really allowing our counselors to get to, quickly get to families that are in need. They've also worked with our high school and getting us, working with us on the JED High School project that we're gonna be working on. I just met with our mental health advisor for that, myself and Michelle Baiera, School Adjustment Counsel over there, and we have a working group. And again, they've been instrumental in kind of helping us promote that. And then we have an Active Minds chapter that they're gonna talk about as well, which is new after the high school, again, supporting the mental wellness of students and staff and trying to break down the stigma. And then doing some other work with the middle school around speakers and so forth. But again, I don't want to steal their thunder. They've done incredible work, and we really have...
Vinnie, you're stealing their thunder. Sit down.
Sounds like a storm coming in.
Well, thank you for allowing us to speak again. We enjoy collaborating with Norton, and we're just gonna kind of fill you in on what we did, what we've done in the past year and what we want to do this coming year. And just a reminder, our mission is to promote wellness, to eliminate the stigma, and to reduce the rate of suicide amongst youngsters between the ages of 13 to 24.
Was I...
No.
I know she's amazing. Yeah, so then the next slide, please, I guess I want to do that. So really, just to remind you about our why and why we formed our foundation is... So when Sarah, when we lost Sarah in 2017, she left us a note. And in that note, she said, "I know I can get help, but I choose not to because I don't want people to look at me differently for the rest of my life." So when you think about that and when you think about a stigma, that's really a clear indication there. And while I think society's ready and certainly we've had amazing support here from the administration and from the schools, you know, ready to try to make a difference there, that's really our why and why we continue to work together with our village. So it's our, just coming up on the finishing of our third year as a foundation, and so we're just excited to be able to raise funds and put 100% of those funds back into the community. So we're working together with you guys here in Norton and also a similar program with Easton, and then doing some work with some other foundations similar to ours. So, but that's our why, and that's what drives us so that other students, and it can be high achievers like the awesome students that were up here before, Sarah was seventh in her class, and not quite a 4.7 GPA on a scale of one to four, but, you know, she was in the 4.3 range, but, you know, we want to help those kids. So then some of the examples, just quizzing you guys a little bit, you know, just making sure we're getting through everything. But do you guys remember how much our grant was for last school year for the 2223?
Denny? Steal the thunder.
Right, so we committed that we'd give you 20, and you guys spent 16, so that's great. And then it's our plan for this, for the current school year that we're in right now. We've pledged another $20,000, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, and then that's really on behalf of so many people that have donated to Sarah's Village, including, recently, we had a Sarah's Village Day, our very first Sarah's Village Day. And two of our board members are Lisa Daley, Adjustment Counselor at Middle School, and then also Tanya Benoit. And so they kind of sent some feelers out, and a bunch of people generously donated from the middle school community or the Norton School community, I think because of Cynthia. But we appreciate that.
Created a basket, and then, which was over like $300, and then donated another $350.
That's great.
I'll have to bring that back. Now a little, kind of a math quiz. Any idea on what 24 plus 8 might mean with respect to the work that we've, that we did last year, school year, and then going into this school year?
Thirty-two.
Excellent. So that's the total number of students that, so it was 24 students that received counseling services from EPIONE last year. So really, that, the collaboration and partnership is amazing. And Vinnie's part of the triage, you know, for when students, you know, through the Adjustment Counselors or whoever, who need those services. But then EPIONE carves out capacity in their practice to respond within 48 hours to any need for counseling services. And we work with other groups and foundations, and we talk to other communities, and they're envious of that opportunity. It's really amazing. So 24 last year and eight currently so far in this school year. And it pretty much runs the same as your fiscal year, so the bills don't stop. But when your fiscal year ends, we keep going into the next one. So it's eight so far since July 1st. And then a couple of things that we have planned are Ivy Watts is a mental health presenter, and she's 29-ish, so she can really relate to the kids, and she has a great problem... And she has a great program. She was a Division One athlete. And she just talks about how she used to hide it. And despite looking awesome and, you know, athlete and, you know, great with her academics, deep inside, she just wasn't happy. And she talks about that importance of, you know, talking and it's okay to not be okay and to seek assistance. So she's going to be, she came to Easton last year. The Active Minds had a conference at Gillette Stadium, which we were a sponsor there as well. And so she spoke in there. And then Lisa and Tyner saw her and were like, "We want her here." I'm like, "All right." We worked together with Vinnie. And so she's going to be coming in January to talk to all three grades. You know, changing the presentation to relate to sixth and seventh and eighth graders. But hopefully that'll, I think it'll be great and I think they'll really enjoy it. Vinnie mentioned earlier, Active Minds Club. So similar to, Easton has one and Kyle Cares is really who drives the Active Minds Clubs in the area. Kyle Cares, similar foundation to ours. They lost their son Kyle. And similar mission, trying to create some magic from the tragic loss of our, our kids. So you have both those clubs. And our role is they get them up and running. And then what we're, what we try to do from a collaborative standpoint is, are there any projects or anything that we could help as they continue to really support their peers? It's really a peer-to-peer, a set next level of kids might not be willing to talk to a parent or an adult, but they might be willing to tell a friend. And Sarah had told some of her friends, but they just didn't really know how to react. And so it's that coaching and teaching and understanding that I think, you know, is some of the great work that the Active Minds Club, so.
And one of the things in the Active Minds, if you're walking around high school, you might see this purple, purple band that kids in or staff are wearing. And it just is a way of indicating if you need someone to talk to, if you need to find out how to get help, just go to somebody with the purple band. So the Active Minds are the group that came up with that idea and have been implementing it around the, around the high school. And they're actually going down to the middle school during ice blocks. Can't remember exact dates, but they're going down there and meeting with kids and talking about wellness and making good choices and so forth. So we have a really good group of, small group, we're trying to grow it, but it's a really good group of kids that are jumping on board with what you're trying to promote.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, and needed at the middle school too. And they're starting to pilot Active Minds nationally, piloting something at the junior high. So kind of ahead of the game there, which is great. And then the JED Foundation started in late 90s, 97, same thing. They lost their son Jed, based out of New York, but they're a national organization. They get a large grant from Mackenzie Scott, $15 million. Mackenzie Scott is the ex-wife of Jeff Bezos. And so with that $15 million, that program that's being implemented at the high school used to be a $25,000 expense, but it's an opportunity. So brave for taking it on to say, "All right, we're going to open the doors and say, what are our strengths and what are our opportunities for improvement?" But that's a, it's a holistic program, focuses on seven different domains around mental health and wellness of kids. But it gives a great roadmap of this is what you can do to strengthen those programs going forward. And we were talking with Millis High School this morning, just kind of getting the lay of, you know, where their journey has been. They're in their third year. They're a huge Active Minds school as well. They have 100 kids in their club, which is crazy. But, um, so that's the, but the JED Foundation, they said, has been a great experience for them. Again, identifying what some of their strengths are and building on those, but what are the opportunities for improvement, so. But, uh, so that's kind of our story. The last slide, I think last year someone here said, "What can we do to help?" But, uh, you know, as far as the, again, the school system has been great in the town in supporting us. But if anyone wanted to visit our website, that's where we're taking in our cash. Sarah's Village Day is probably be our one event. It'll be a fall event again next year. And then I'm not an Insta and I do do Facebook, but Cynthia does Instagram. But you can follow us there too or sign up for our newsletter if you want to see kinds of things. Four times a year. I know you got a lot on the plate already, but that's essentially.
Well, this one's important.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
You're welcome. So that's it.
Vinnie, anything else?
We're going to go down and beat and do some more planning.
I think it's just important just to recognize Mark and Cynthia and just thank them for all of the time and work and support they've given our students here in Norton. I know Cynthia was dedicated her time and her life to educating our students at Norton Middle School. And to have her come back and, and continue to support our students is, is just incredible. So thank you both. And thanks to Vinnie for doing a lot of the work with them.
It was nice to see some former students.
Yes, right?
I was like, "Oh, I know her and I know her." So that was awesome.
And there's a whole group of people, yeah, not just the Lisas and the Tyners, but there's people at the high school, the middle school and the elementaries that help support what we're trying to do here. So it really truly is a group, a group effort, so.
Takes a village.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And pray from the top though too, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, we do appreciate that.
Thank you guys.
Thanks again.
Thank you. All right. Well, now you have to go with MCAS overview.
Yes.
I know. Just understand.
Yeah, Brian, I'm going to tell you right now, like, Jen history, like Jen probably said, "Oh, you should, you know, do this presentation." And you were like, "That sounds so great. That's what a great idea." She literally threw Hornets Nest at you.
He's a super daddy. It's his job.
You're happy. You don't have to do it anymore.
I'm so happy. I don't have to do it this year.
To Dinesh, to your point, I completely understand because I think so much of the results is about context.
She hustled you, buddy.
So much of the results are really around context and perspective. And, you know, one of the really unfortunate things that happened with MCAS very early on is that it was positioned as a be-all, end-all. And it was positioned as everything was going to be funneled into this basket. And the reality is it's one measure, but it's one of many measures that we use here in Norton. We attach value to it, but it is one of a series of other data measures that we take. So I, I think I can certainly understand that because it's one piece of a much bigger mosaic and it doesn't define us. And I, you know, I, I knew that coming in. I philosophically feel that way. I'm not a test-oriented person in that it's the one way to define kids. Our kids are full humans with social, emotional, relational needs. But it is data that's collected, so I feel like it is important to share out with the public and the larger community. And it really is reflective of the standards that we teach. I know sometimes folks say, "You teach to a test." And I know here in Norton, I just spent an entire day in the middle school classroom. I know that teachers don't teach a test. They really do teach the content and the skills. So just maybe that perspective is a bit of a backdrop, maybe helpful. But to your point, Dinesh, I understand. I really do.
So my, my thing is, is not, it's, so you said it was, you know, people think it's the end-all, be-all. I think it's the end nothing and be very little. It's, it's, it's almost worthless. And my, my problem is, is that while the data is almost worthless, it becomes completely worthless if we don't look at it the right way. And I think we have systematically not looked at it the right way. That's, that's my, my, that's going to be my, my soapbox tonight, is that we're not looking at this data in the probably only way it's useful to us as a school committee. Because while I, I understand that you can look at the data on a, on a student basis from, from your perspective, we, we don't get that data and nor should we. We should not be getting student data. So, so we have to look at this kind of holistically. And, and tonight, you know, we're probably going to get snapshots of, here's how, you know, they did in eighth grade math and whatever. And, and I'm going to tell you that, that, that data in that format is uniquely useless to us, is what I'm saying. So, but I'll.
Absolutely.
Maybe you'll, maybe you'll surprise me and wow me. I don't know. But I, I feel like this is going to be a little bit of a waste of our time. It is. Brian, I told you, I told you, coming up, like, you're, you're, you're getting a bad beef here.
That's okay. I'm really okay with it. So my hope is with the, with the presentation, and I'll certainly stop along the way with questions or clarifications.
Don't worry. I'll, I'll interrupt you.
Is to hopefully be able to provide maybe looking at data some different ways and then providing some examples from like a curriculum and instruction perspective of how our teams do use the data to help plan future lessons. So let me, if I could, just get started. Maybe I can, through the presentation, answer a couple of questions. So I mentioned, you know, on the onset, that context was really important and that we all know the last five years, three of the last five years, the way that kids have been tested and the times at which kids have been tested, three of the five years have been different. And so to really hang our hat as this being a be-all, end-all with differentiated, differentiated styles of testing and then not having been tested in 20, already I will position this with a caveat that there are some limitations here. So I just feel like to add some additional context entering this space, I think is helpful.
So in 2021, the half-test, I'm assuming, just for clarity, is?
Yes.
They got like math, not science or something like that?
I believe they got half tests for both. So they didn't have two days of testing, if my recollection is correct.
Just one session for each subject area?
So because we want to look at MCAS contextually and because we want to make sure that we can really be clear with the school committee and the public, we have always wanted to be proactive around teaching and learning and around curriculum and instruction. MCAS is an endpoint in that process. It really reflects in some ways our teaching and our learning. So something that has been done and has been ongoing to be proactive as a way to help boost student learning is we have five current new curriculum adoptions. So we are onboarding stepping stones in math this year in elementary, mid-school math in the middle school, Amplify ELA in the middle school. We have, because student success is also social, emotional and behavior, we're implementing Character Strong in K-8. And we have started with Navig8360 in high school. And the reason I bring up the social, emotional and the character pieces is that those components go into making the student a whole person. And when students take assessments, they do it as whole people. So we don't want to ever just look at one strand as being the defining characters. Additionally, we do have a coming curriculum adoption for Ampli, excuse me, for K-5 ELA. So currently we have a field test team in place. We are doing field testing between now and the Christmas vacation for one set. And then when we come back in January, we'll be doing a second set between the week of the 13th and February vacation. The team will come together and make a decision. The reason that this is important is because the curricular materials that we use really drive our instructional process. So if we have aligned products with, that match the standards, we give all of our students the best chance to meet with success, not only on MCAS, but all of our assessments.
The curriculum for the mid-school math and the Amplify, did those start this year as well?
They did.
Oh, okay.
They did. So we had PD over the summer, onboarding PD today. And then again tomorrow, I was with Jacqueline Johnson from Mid School Math. We did a full day of in-district coaching with all the math teachers. We're going to go back for a second session tomorrow. We'll then have a virtual check-in to kind of unpack the understanding next, next week. And then the folks from Amplify will be coming out in January to meet with our teams with a similar model. Again, we really try to take a comprehensive approach that involves multiple steps of professional development to inform. Another real important consideration that impacts our student achievement is our IMTSS system, which has been ongoing. And we're really deepening the dive this year into year two. So we're continuously focusing our lens on providing the right interventions to all of our students at the right times. It's great to hear, and I know it came up in the student report today, that all of our schools have a dedicated time to support students that may need a little extra boost. So that's critically important. We continue to have conversations about using the best data. So in our leadership team meetings, in our IMTSS teams' meetings, we're really focusing on it, what kind of data matters most to us? We collect a lot of data, but really a lot of that data is around locally what makes sense for Norton Public School students. How can we use that data in our classrooms right now for student achievement? And then, as I alluded to just a moment ago, we have to give our staff the best possible PD frequently with opportunities for questions, opportunities for growth, and we're continuing to do that. So that's kind of the background as we enter the space, just some a little bit, kind of the big picture view. So across the state, the results are at or above the 2022 levels in both math and ELA. So that's something to celebrate. It is important to note that our statewide averages are not back to pre-19 levels, so we have work to do. And we have had, and this isn't Norton specific, but across the state, a slight decrease in science. So that's kind of the 30,000-foot view as I kind of winnow down to the current state in Norton Public Schools.
Dr. Ackerman, can you just remind us, what grade levels take MCAS?
Three through eight and grade 10.
As my, kind of this jumping out pre-2019, are most of those students graduated? Grade three would be what? 10th graders right now?
Grade three.
No, 10th?
No.
No. So I got to think about this. My daughter, my daughter was a fifth grader and now she's a ninth grader. So those, yeah, that, they would have been, they'd be eighth graders.
So the eighth and the 10th graders wouldn't be in this cohort of data because they're graduated, right? What would the eighth graders be?
Eighth graders from 2019?
Everybody five years back, right?
Yeah. They're gone.
They would be gone. They would be out.
So, so I guess that's my problem with the data is we have two of the three cohorts aren't testing. And this is the struggle we always have with MCAS is when we see this changeover, that doesn't mean that the students that graduated are any better or worse than our current students. But we can't look at the data as conclusive when we can't test everybody at the same levels.
And it is true because we are looking at one snapshot in time. I do have some slides on the backend that follow cohorts. So they would follow, let's say, a third grader in 2021, a fourth grader in 2022, and a fifth grader in 2023. Maybe it's a way to gain some additional context in terms of not only what's behind us, but what lies ahead.
Right. So I, I would make it on the slide that we're looking at here. I think you made the, the observation or the comment that the results for ELA and math were at or above our 2022 levels statewide. And that was something good, but slight decrease in science. I, I would actually make the observation that that does not tell us anything positive about the students at all. It tells us that likely the 2023 test in math and ELA was easier or whatever the comparison is, and the science one was slightly harder. Because it's, it's unlikely that on a state level, the kids became dumber or the teachers became worse. So, so this is why I have such an issue with this is it's, you, you can't look at, you know, you can't look at a district and say, "Oh, you know, year to year, the district..." Even, even on a cohort level, you can't look and say, "Hey, last year the third graders did whatever, 5% exceed, and the next year the fourth graders, same cohort, did 7%." It doesn't tell us that they necessarily did better. What it tells us is that potentially the test was just easier. So again, we're looking at this data the wrong way. And that's my biggest problem with it. And I'll, I'll stop again here and let you keep going. But kind of keep that in mind, that my, my, my belief here is that we're not looking at this like we're supposed to look at it. We keep looking at these, these data sets that we, we can't use as comparison. And, and we pretend that we can and we can't.
So one potential way to help use the data set is to share out. So I had a nice conversation with Principal Hayward today because I was at the middle school. And what Principal Hayward does on a yearly basis is, for example, the class of seventh graders that are currently in front of those teachers now. in front of those teachers now. All of those teachers get the previous, that cohort, six grade results in seventh grade, as well as the results of the outgoing students, students that are now eighth grade. And what you're able to do is to look at clusters of skills and standards and to be able to look across the grade level cohort and identify a strand or strands that were A, great in the celebration of strength, but also an area where it leads to a question. So if students did not do quite as well, let's say, in geometry, you could go then go back and have a conversation with the teachers and talk about the specific strands and concepts and see where they are in the curriculum.
Right. And on a student level, you can do that. On a district level, I would make the observation that you cannot. Because when you say, oh, they did better on geometry, you don't know if the geometry section was just simply easier or it was actually student performance. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the twist of the story here. The only way that we can do this is to look at the district and the only thing that's valuable to the school committee, because again, we can't see the student-to-student data, is to take our district and compare it year over year to the state and how the state performed. And it's, it's not perfect, but it's essentially, if you look at the state and you say, okay, I'm gonna make this like, kind of like a, like a bastardization of the law of large numbers and say, okay, that's the entire data set, right? So the state is the entire data set. How does the state do from year to year? Go back to whatever, 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, and chart it out. And how does the state do on a year-to-year basis in whatever, third grade math? And then how does the district of Norton do? And compare them side by side. And this is a number I actually asked for. So this is, this is something that I wanted to see because that's the only data set that'll tell us as a district, are we doing better or worse than we were? If the entire state is going this way and we're going like, like, sorry, I'm trying to, if the state's doing this and we're doing this, yeah, we're going up. But guess what? We should be going more because the point isn't to be, you know, oh, we're, we're an okay district, but not as good as everybody else. We want to be better, right? That's the point. So, and I would, I would also make the, the argument that the town of Norton shouldn't be a statewide average district. We should be better than that, quite frankly. I mean, there's a number of reasons and we can, we can go into it, but you know, socio-economically, et cetera, we should be better than state averages.
And that's really where like independent of MCAS, MCAS is one cog in that larger wheel.
But we don't look at the data that way. We never look at the data that way. Not one time. And I don't understand why we don't. I just don't get why we don't do that.
So I think what we're saying is that for school committee's sake, you guys want to see something that looks more specifically at our comparison to the state, where what we are trying to do with our, with our staff and with teachers is look more specifically at curriculum and standards. So we can address where are the weak points in our day-to-day instruction that we can use to enhance learning for students?
And I understand that. And my two arguments, my first one broadly and more solidly is the presentation you make to us should be the comparison to state over time. So we can say, hey, over time, over the past decade, two decades, Norton has lost ground, gained ground, or stayed the same. That's, that's what we really should be doing right here, right now. That, that is the only thing that we can really do is say holistically, how are we doing as a district? Because it can't be a, you know, Mr. McGillicuddy in the third grade is teaching poorly. It's not in the scope of what we do here. So, so it has to be a larger holistic view, and we're not doing that. And while I get that you guys are using this to be, again, curriculum-based, I understand that, but I will go back to my original point and say, you know, you don't know that you're doing better, worse, whatever, in, in that curriculum point unless you really look at it and say, okay, well, how did other people do too?
Yeah.
Because if the entire state did worse, it isn't necessarily indicative that we didn't do a good job of teaching it. It may just be simply that that section of the test was extremely difficult or maybe it was worded poorly. We don't know. So I'm not sure that we're looking at the data.
And I do have some slides that will show Norton comparison to the states by grade level?
Yes, and I saw those and it was for the year. And the year doesn't tell me anything. I want to know what the trend was over time. Like, I think I've already established, like, if we're behind the state, if we're at or behind the state, to me, that's unacceptable. It's simply unacceptable.
You know, I think another point to make, when we look at these and like Dinesh, I was a data guy for a while, you know, so we sit here and, you know, as a committee, as elected officials, we have to do what's best for our 2,500-plus students with, you guys come to us with these curriculum recommendations, we look them over, we say yes. And, and I completely understand MCAS is one piece of the puzzle, but if we look, if we can look at one piece of the puzzle with the data and say, well, our MCAS is, is, you know, going on the upward trend and we're, I'd love to be, you know, above the state average just as a bragging rights if nothing else. But if we're not, then we as an elected board have to say, well, you came to us with these curriculum recommendations, we said yes, we spent the money, we allocated that, and we're not getting our return in investment. So I think that's to Dinesh's point. That's one of the things we have to look at as, you know, we can look at the data, we can say, you know, Norton's doing good. Okay, great. But what's Norton doing for the state? So we're trying to essentially look at our investment in the curriculum that's brought to us and have to say now, what are we getting with this investment in curriculum?
And the curriculum is one aspect of it, right? So like the teacher, as we all know, a teacher, the teacher is the most important person in the classroom. And what they do with that curriculum resource is really, really important. The professional development that we provide to our staff is really, really important. It's, it's so much more nuanced than that. And so, you know, why don't we let Dr. Ackerman show you what he has? And if the committee would like to see more data in terms of over time, we can certainly do that to you, whether it's a presentation or as information, we can certainly do that.
So if I could just take a look and just show you in the high school, so this is grade 10 ELA, it may be easier for you to read it in your packet than on the slide. But if you were to look at the number of students meeting and exceeding expectations in Norton, that is 61% of grade 10 high school ELA students. And if you were to take the same number, meeting and exceeding expectations in the state, that's a 58% average. So in grade 10 for ELA, Norton High School is three points above the state average. So that's a, it's a, it's a nice solid win for the district.
And am I, am I wrong? I'm not a 100% sure, but these, these numbers for the state, for everybody, seem like they're way down from what they used to be.
They are. They are absolutely 100%.
Because one of the, like, the sun coming up in the morning, you could bet your butt that whatever the, you know, meets and exceeds were for three, four, five, six, seven, when they got to 10, all of a sudden, everybody was a genius and it was 99% of the people passed. So again, not that there's great teachers, because otherwise, just get, get the ninth grade teachers to teach everybody apparently because they're, they're knocking it out of the park. No, they just made the test easier at 10. So, you know, I, this is, I'm glad that we're beating the state, but I mean, this seems to me like this, these are poor compared to what they used to be. Now, does that tell us that they're finally testing them correctly? Maybe. And maybe that's, that's, maybe that's good news, but I don't know. Anyways, I'm sorry.
And, and pre-COVID, we did the test change. We went from the traditional MCAS assessment, that was advanced proficient, whatever it was. And then we moved to this next generation MCAS where that is when we saw those numbers drop significantly.
Yes, and I believe that we, as a committee, were not in favor of that, but.
Yes. So it's, it's a totally different assessment, the way that they're grading them now. Because you're right, Dinesh, we consistently saw 97, 98, 99% of our students hitting the ELA mark. And then math was typically right around like 92, 91, forever. Those were our, those were our stats. And when they changed this test, it's way, way down. And that's everywhere across the state. That, that percentage is different. But I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. Sorry about that, Dr. Ackerman.
And then if we look at math for grade 10 at Norton High School, Norton combining the meet and exceed is 50%. And for the state, combining the meet and exceed is 50%. So Norton is exactly at the state average for math. If we wanted to go to science, Norton, the combined meeting and exceeding expectations is 52%. And then the state combined meeting and exceeding is 47%. So while the statewide trend was down aggregately, Norton was five points above the state average. So in two out of the three areas at Norton High School, we exceeded the state average. If we look at grades three through eight for ELA, the combined number of meeting and exceeding was 40% for Norton. And then the combined meeting and exceeding for the state was 42%. So we were just a tick under the state average for grades three through eight ELA. For grades three through eight math, we had 36% of students combined meeting and exceeding expectations. And then the state had a 40% average for that. So again, Norton just below the state average combining grades three through eight for math.
So when you say, using 40% as a benchmark, does that mean 60% of our students are not meeting?
Meeting, yes. Or partially meeting or not meeting, yes.
So to me, that's the scary number.
And really, that's where the curriculum piece is so important. Because foundationally, curriculum really undergirds in combination with the teacher, the success of kids. So by having a new, modern, and truly standards-based aligned program like mid-school math, and then having next year, an aligned program for ELA, so all kids get that substantially similar experience based upon standards, that's going to go a long way to boosting their scores, along with really the developing IMTSS system, so that we're able to give those kids the additional support how they need it and when they need it. So as I alluded to earlier, another way to look at data over time is to look at specific cohorts of students. So the first set of slides that are going to come, we're going to follow a cohort of students from grade three in 2021 through grade four in 2022, and grade five in 2023. It's important to note that for the cohort data, those third graders in 2021 only took the partial test. In 22 and 23, those students took a full test.
I ask, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but why is it important to note that? Like, is it, is there something about that partial test that is, do we believe it's easier or harder? Or like, what's?
When you, when you, when you change test design, there's the potential that your results won't be the same.
Then why are we including it in this?
It was included to just give context over time with that cohort of students. Again, it's not a perfect benchmark, but it's one benchmark that may help give us some insight over time. But to your point, Dinesh, it should be viewed with caution.
Okay.
And so if you look at the percentage of change from students in grades four in 2022 and grade five in 2023, you'll notice that our students made a 2% increase from 22 to 23. And then for MET, we were up five points in from 22 to 23, from 26 to 31%.
And you know what my next question's going to be, right? How did the state do? Because this just tells me that potentially the test was easier in 2023, not that, not that we did necessarily better.
Or was it harder because we had 6% exceeding and then we only had zero, then we had zero and then 2%?
Right. I mean, that's, this, this, the data doesn't tell me what I think, we think it's telling me. It just, it just tells me that potentially the test was easier. Unless I know how the, the cohort here isn't really like our, our, what grade are we looking at here, ELA, the grade three, four, five? It's, the cohort is grade three, four, five district wide. And how did, how did we, I'm sorry, not, I'm sorry, statewide. And how did we do against the state? Because if the entire state between, and I noticed we only do it from 22 to 23, we don't use a 21 here because we'd be down. But if we, if we look at 22 to 23 and say, oh, you know, for, for exceeded, we're up 2% and for MET, we're up 5%. If the state is up 4% and 7%, then guess what? We stink. And I'm just going to call it like it is. We didn't do a good job then. Like, so we sit here and say, look, two plus two plus five, that's great. I don't know if it is. I have no way to know if it is. So, and I'm sorry, I know like, nobody wants to hear me rant about this, but this stuff's important and it's the one way we can use this data. This data is 98% garbage. There's 2% that we can actually use and we're not using. And I don't get it.
If I could move on to the next slide with the elementary math. If you look at 2022 to 2023, we are essentially the same. We're unchanged, our results in the meet and exceeded categories.
So touching a little bit on Dinesh's state question, what is, what does the state do with this data? Like, do they judge school districts with the results or?
Because they're really, they like not shut somebody down.
So they do. They do judge districts based on this data. They look, currently, they look at progress over time as a whole district, but then they also look at progress over time when it comes to specific cohorts. So for example, your low-income students, your students with disabilities. Then they look at different racial backgrounds of students and they look at that data. And what they do is they make determinations of how far you need to grow each year in order to meet a target down the road. And what they'll do is during the accountability data, they'll say, okay, this school, you know, made progress towards their targets. They made significant progress towards their targets. They made not as much progress as they should have. And they take all of that data and that's how they either recognize schools of distinction that are being recognized for their progress, or they recognize schools that are going to need additional supports.
Didn't they, a few years back, they decertified somebody or took somebody over?
Oh, yeah, Lawrence was a receivership.
That's Lawrence, that's who it was. That's who it was.
Chelsea.
Chelsea.
Chelsea. And then there was a district, you know, the mass, in Central Mass.
Yeah, they do. They use it to space.
So this year, the, the department is not putting any new schools into like a warning area that they need support. What they're focusing instead on is the chronic absenteeism.
Which has nothing to do with MCAS.
But it's part of our determination.
It's with the, with chronic absenteeism, the difficulty is students that are not attending school don't have access to instruction. So it becomes really difficult to assist them fairly.
So when the state, so I know we mentioned early on, we use this as a small component of, does the state use this or do they put more weight to it? Like when they determine, you know, receivership of a school district or something like that?
They really have no other data to judge us by. It's MCAS data, it is absentee data, it's graduation and dropout rates. Those are the things that the state looks at. They do not have any of our local assessments to draw back on. You know, we've had this conversation about, you know, you can't say you want 60% of your kids to read. You want all of your kids to be able to read. And the lofty goal that we have in our strategic plan, about 90% of our students at reading, at graded level by third grade. We have all these other assessments here. We have STAR, which our students take. We have the Benchmark Assessment System, which helps us have ideas about reading comprehension. We use curriculum-based measures with our youngest students to do letter and sound recognition. That data does not tell the same story.
Yes. Because our, our students are making progress. Like when you look at students in early elementary, you look at the progression in terms of being able to read and to do math, our own internal data, our own assessments are showing student progress. That's really why at the beginning, I wanted to interpret this with some degree of caution, in that it's one spoke and that I think for us here in Norton, in understanding our student achievement, I think we're, we're more well-positioned to know our kids better because our classroom teachers, our leaders really look at that data pretty religiously. And so the second set of cohort that I wanted to follow was a sample of middle school. So if you had grade six in 21, grew grade eight in 23, you saw the growth of 3% in the exceeded, 11% in the MET category. So a net growth of 14% in those combined categories over three years. Excuse me.
Over two years.
Two years. Thank you. So I think that's, that's a pretty significant growth for us. And then for our math data, we saw that 1% in 22 to 23. And then for our math data, we saw that one percent in 22 to 23 over that cohort over time. Exceeded, we did go down slightly in the MET category to minus four percent, so our net change in the meet and exceeded in middle school math over three years was down three percent. So really, we know, and I know we've had, you know, a good back and forth of our context. We have a lot of opportunities for growth. We're already being proactive with our IMTSS system, our curriculum, our instruction, our professional development. We're going to continue to work very hard, work as a district, work as a collaborative team to build those systems and to evolve them. We know that there's a lot of work that we've undertaken, and we know that there's a lot that lies ahead. So we use these as one data point to help inform us, because MCAS is really one smaller piece of what we have as a large pie of curriculum, teaching, learning, and assessment here at Norton. That's it. Unless, if folks have any questions, clarifications?
Anything else, Dennis?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, Brian, listen, you were given like an unwinnable task here, quite frankly. And Jen did it for a million years.
And we had the same conversations every single year.
Yeah, this is not new. I mean, you can check the tapes, man, it's down there. But you were, listen, you were given an unwinnable task, you handled yourself very well. This is nothing personal to you or invite that.
Thank you.
It's, and, and I'm on record a million times as saying I can't stand MCAS, I think it's a complete waste of time. All that being said, we should look at the data in the way that I'm, I'm saying we should look at it.
We'd be happy to provide that to you, absolutely.
Without question.
So it should, it should be, you know, basically versus the state, and we should look at it third grade, year to year to year, not as a cohort, because, because as a cohort, I'm not sure that that necessarily tells me what we want to, maybe we can, I don't know, maybe we?
And see, that's the hard, and I actually feel like we debate this every year, because we talk, when we, when we have in the past looked at like third grade data, we say, it's not the same kids, you're comparing apples to oranges.
Right.
And so we have, we have done that in the past, too.
Except, except when you do it versus the state. Because when you do it versus the state, now you're apples to apples. You're basically saying, how is that, how is our third grade doing versus the entirety of the cohort? The absolute entirety of the, of the data set, right? And so then we can, we can look back and we can say, okay, over time, and for those watching at home, this is not, I'm not picking on third grade math or anything, but, you know, over time, third grade math has, has outperformed versus the state, or underperformed or whatever, you know, like however, however they're doing. And what is the trend? Is the trend, we're getting better versus the state?
Or the gap is getting better.
Or are we getting worse?
Yes.
Because again, I would just make this, like, you know, we, we looked at some of these numbers and we were like, we're saying, oh, you know, we, we were three, three percent better than the state. That's, that is, to me, is not acceptable. Like, we should be better than that. This is, Norton is not a, is, I was going to say a bad district. Norton is not a bad district. Norton is a very, very good district, with, I believe, excellent teachers, excellent students, parent support, et cetera, clearly a phenomenal school committee. So we should be, we should be doing really, really well, you know, versus like, versus the state average, quite frankly. And, and so if we're not, we should, we should determine, is that a trend? Is it something that, you know, maybe it's just this year, I don't know. I, I'll say that historically, I know that when the kids went into the fourth grade, fourth grade math was, was always a downward blip for us, and a big one, you know? I, I, the data doesn't say that this year. The data's actually like, wow, fourth and fifth grader, they might be better in some, I, I don't remember what the number said exactly, but, but that, that's, that's a variation from what the norm has been historically. So we may want to look at that and say, hey, look, fourth grade math, we've always talked about fourth grade math, and how, ah, it seems like there's, we're struggling there, and it's a transition school, or whatever we call, like, because they move, maybe that, maybe that trend, maybe we're starting to, you know, go from beneath the state to now we're at the state and slightly above, that's great news. We should, we should look at that data and say, okay, whatever we're doing in, in that segment of our school district
Yeah.
is working, and it's what we want to replicate, and we want to do that. We want to, if, if we're doing it and it's working, do more of it and do it harder. If we're doing it and it's not working, stop doing it, quite honestly. So that's, that's, again, nobody wants to hear me anymore, I'm sure. Christine's ready to kill me.
I just want to say one more thing, and I think there's a lot of rhetoric out there about MCAS, and there's been a lot of conversations about how MCAS doesn't matter. It does. And that's, kids hear that, and teachers hear that, and they don't take it seriously, right? So we just had this conversation the other day, our administrative team, about our STAR assessment, and how we're wondering, are we getting good data on kids, or are they just taking it in three minutes and not really trying? And so I think we have to say, like, this is not a test for you as a student. This is a test for us as a school community to see what we need to do better. And take that pressure off our kids, but at the same time, still ask them to try their very best. I tell my kids all the time, like, this is not a test, my own kids, I have a child that has an IP and a child that doesn't, and I always say, like, you go in and you try a hundred and ten percent, but the test is not about you. It's about your school. And so do your best, and I think we need to change our message to our students.
I like that dialogue better, because that's the first I've heard of that.
Because it really, and again, I, when I opened, I know it was positioned as a be-all, end-all, and it's not, but it's, it is also, it also is important. And it also is like, there's a middle ground here, and it is fair to really ask our, our students to, to do their best, and to really show as a school community that it's something of value. You know, again, not an end-all, be-all, but something that is important, that's going to help us go.
And, and I think, you know, early on, you said, well, people say you just teach to the test. I mean, yeah, that's, that's true though, right? Like, of course we teach to the test, because the test is supposed to, it's supposed to assess
Standards.
what you know on, on standard stuff. So we, it's not necessarily that we teach to the test, but we teach the test, the stuff that's obvious. It's going to be on the test.
That's it. We teach to the standards.
Right.
And the standards are measured on the assessment.
And, and as we should, right? I mean, we're not going to teach tracking animals in the snow, because guess what? That doesn't really have a ton of applicable, you know, merit to, to living life in today's society.
But the kids would love it.
But they might. But I mean, but, but yeah, so we teach, we teach math, we teach ELA, we teach science, because those are the things we're supposed to be teaching. And I think most people would agree, like, that's, that's what you want, you know, you want your curriculum to be that. So, you know, with respect to teaching to the test, yeah, I mean, we, we kind of do, but it's, it's happenstance, not, not on purpose.
And I just think it's important to think about our messaging to, to students and to teachers and to families.
I feel like you might be slightly telling me to stop saying that you teach about science.
No, I'm not. I'm not saying that. But I'm saying, I'm saying if we keep saying it doesn't matter, people believe it, and you don't put the effort in.
And we've said that for a number of years.
I have, but in fairness, the reason I said this, because I don't, I don't know that we're getting anything out of the data, quite honestly. So maybe it's better for me to say that, I'm not sure as a school committee member, MCAS data is, is value-driven for, for me
Absolutely.
right now.
Sure. So just quickly, what is an MCAS, like, what does a typical, like, question look like? Is it like a multiple choice? Like, like, I'm just thinking, like, kids are just sitting there, click A, B, C, or like, or is it like, you know, like you get a survey from somebody, you know, one through five, neutral on every single one, like, how does it, like, what does a test look like?
It's a combination.
No, I'm that much older than you.
But it was like, wait, it was that guy? But Christine, the test that you took is so different now. They're all computer-based. They're, they're not all multiple choice. Students have to, you know, solve problems, they have
Just show your work. There's a writing piece.
They have to write responses to literature, compare and contrast literature, your fact versus opinion.
So you can't just like, be neutral on every question?
No. And, and there's like even, even types of questions where they'll have like five different things, you need to put them in the correct order, so you're dragging and dropping, and it's, it's very different than the traditional multiple choice. I remember, we took like the Stanford test and the Iowa test when we were in school, Dan, and like
I didn't take that either.
Who didn't take that either?
The bubble sheets.
Still that much older. The Scantron sheets.
The bubble sheets.
Yes.
I remember the bubble sheets, I remember back in, when I was in eighth grade, back in the, two thousand two hundred and eleven, that was when in middle school, I took MCAS tests.
You don't remember taking?
Okay, anything else? Any other questions?
That's it. I really, I really do appreciate the conversation, the back and forth, so thanks for bearing with me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the FY25 budget process timeline. Christine, you're up.
So these are the same documents that you saw the other night, so we'll just go over them again, so you can see them. So the past month, we've been preparing these timelines, we've worked, discussed with our individual departments, and just been reviewing our current financials. And then on November first, we kicked off the budget process by sending it, sending the budget submissions to each department and principal. We are giving everyone a month, about a month, a little over a month to give them back to the business office, where then we will review them and meet with the principals and department heads to discuss their submissions. And then we will also, individually, and then we'll also work together as a group to discuss the next steps and their needs that they need for their school. And then Dr. Renaud will work the beginning of January to get the presentation, the very first presentation ready for you on January twenty-fifth, and then the tentative February third, the Saturday workshop, and then hopefully shortly thereafter, which is a little bit earlier than
Absolutely.
Good.
I think one thing taking away from that meeting on Monday is, I think level services is even a lofty goal at this point, from what, what the town leaders were saying about the budget. So I think it's something we have to be cognizant of when we're looking at all these.
I think that's prob, I think that's really where we need to start. We need to show them that this is what the cost would be to keep everything at the level that we are currently at for all of our students. Of course, we're always going to have special education, things that come up. And I also, one of the things I want to include this year is, what are those requests that we're not putting forward? Because just because it's not going forward and it's not being funded, it doesn't mean that it's still not a need.
Right.
And it's really important that people see that, and see that we are not asking for all sorts of crazy things. We still have needs that are out there. So Christine and I have been doing a lot of work and a lot of spending some time exploring other districts and how they kind of present their budgets to the community. I know there's a lot of conversation about, it's just numbers, people have a lot of questions about it, and my background is not school finance, so I certainly understand that. So we're hoping to make it a little bit more palatable for the community this year.
So anything else?
I just, just one kind of broad question. When we look at other districts or something like this, like, how do they handle like the special ed requests? Like, is there any town that says, you know, I know Denez has suggested this probably as long as I've been on the committee, is, you know, special ed should come off the top because it's a fixed cost that, you know, we can't, we can't do anything with. You know, is there any town that has any type of formula like that or similar to that, like, that they can say, you know, because like, I always look at it this way, is, you know, Southeastern never comes to us with their budget, they just send us a check or send us a bill. You know, the, the Aggie comes to us and just sends us a bill. That's where I think special ed should be considered that way, is, this is the bill we have to pay first.
I agree.
You know, and it's, it's similar to those other schools that we out-of-district place. I mean, even, you know, Reed's Collaborative, the Bykos, they send us an invoice. That, to me, is how special ed should be treated. I don't know, I'm not smart enough or at the highest level where that should be a thing, but that just, to me, just makes sense when it comes to our special needs, fixed costs. Like, to me, it's like, it's almost like paying your utility bills, you know what it's going to be, here's, here's the check for it.
I don't know if there are other communities that present it in that way. I haven't personally seen it. Doesn't mean, doesn't exist, but.
Yeah, I haven't seen that either. I mean, this was the first district, I've seen that we've completely separated it on the front budget page so prominently, so, which I think is a great idea, it's just the first time I've seen it. So I think that we do try to show the impact that it has, but we can look into and explore other districts that might, how they handle the out-of-district costs upfront. I think the other thing, too, is we don't know yet what we're going to get reimbursed, so we might say it's three million, and then we're hoping we get half of that. But for example, this year, we thought we were going to get, I think they're rumoring, rumoring around this time, a hundred percent reimbursement for transportation, and we were banking on a little less than that, even though that was quite, that's what they were saying, and that ended being fifty-seven percent, that we found later, and we were like, so, yeah.
Huge difference.
So I think there's that, it, it is a much bigger sliding scale, because it was like three hundred thousand, you know?
And we didn't get that information until probably the beginning of October.
Yes.
So part of, part of my rationale for wanting to separate up the two budgets, and we've, we've, we've started it, we haven't gotten to where we really need to be. You know, I think we, we present our, our, our two-sided budget, and it goes to FinCom, and obviously, you know, the Select Board sees it, et cetera. Unfortunately, I think all of those people kind of understand the problem, and in the, at the end of the day, we're not going to get more or less money because we put them that way. But it, it's a way to highlight what some of the, the pitfalls, some of the problems are when you plan a budget for a school district. And ultimately, what we really need to do is, we need this to go forward beyond the FinCom and the Select Board. And we should be voting on this at town meeting. So again, I don't think it's going to change the number we get, but if you, if you put forward, right now we have, you know, we're three hundred. If it's, okay, budget three hundred A is special education, this is a mandate, we have to pay it, okay, we see that it goes up, you know, whatever the number is, and next is three hundred B, this is general education, and someone stands up and says, well, wait a minute, why is general education down seven percent? Why are we cutting seven percent? That's what we're dealing with, because holistically, this is what we can put into our school district, and unfortunately, if special education goes up this much, we have to pay that, and the result is that it takes away from down here. And, and hopefully somewhere down the line, we can start changing the conversation. So if, if someone with more, you know, internal fortitude than Sherry and I probably at this point, and Dan, and Justin, you may still have it, I don't know, but is willing to, willing to say, you know what, we need to change things in this town and, and go forward with another, I'm going to say override, whatever, and change the, you know, change the, the format of our revenue, they'll at least, they'll at least be able to, to be a rational conversation. People say, listen, look, here's what we're doing, every year we're cutting this number, it doesn't make sense, like, where are we going with this? You know, and, and I'll tie it back, maybe MCAS, maybe as we, you know, we're going lower and lower, we look and say, well, well, yeah, because we're funding this education less and less every year. Like, you know, we, we have to start making this conversation, a larger conversation beyond the elected and appointed boards. I think they all get it at this point, you know? They, they, they understand it, we've been talking about it for a long time. It has to be more general public, and, and I think the only way you do that is at least start at town meeting. I know not a ton of people show up at town meeting, and I know those things get passed like, you know, like you're spending nickels, and nobody, nobody ever asks questions or anything, but at some point, there has to be a start of that conversation on a broader base, it has to be a town conversation. We're not having that conversation yet. We're, we're not there.
And, and I think it has to start so much earlier than the town meeting.
I agree.
Because we have to be really transparent about what our costs are and what our needs are. And I think, as I said, I'm not the budget expert, but the way that our format was set up, I always had a really difficult time kind of wrapping my head around it, because I'm a very visual learner, and for me, I need to see what we're paying and what we're kind of setting up in just a different format. So I'm hopeful that if we can create a couple more, you know, little graphics like this that can engage people, and we can share them in our newsletters and share them on our social media, and get the word out. I actually shared my most recent budget update with Beth Rossi over at the Senior Center. I asked her to please include it in her upcoming newsletter to her mailing list there. The conver, I couldn't agree more. The conversation has to be expanded beyond this table.
So does anybody know, when other departments in town bring forth their requests, they don't have something like we have where they have their fixed costs that absolutely have to be paid like ours, and then?
No, the only, so there's, I mean, there are, obviously there are costs, like
And mandates, yeah.
Yeah, like our, our debt obligations, like we have to pay those, you know?
So, so just, and I'm not picking on the police department, but like, the police department doesn't say, we have a hundred thousand dollars we have to pay department doesn't say, we have $100,000 we have to pay for new officer training and then we need 200,000 to get something else, like, they don't have something like a.
I don't want to speak for Chief Clark, but I don't believe so.
I'm sure they have mandates in terms of the number of officers on a shift or the number of officers on a road or particular safety equipment. I don't believe they present it to, in that way to the community, but again, I don't want to speak for Chief Clark.
I don't want to speak for the chief, but I, I don't, I don't think anybody does, at least not the way that we do, where.
So nobody else has a group of have to pays?
You're required, yeah, man, and it's, and it's a substantial part of our budget.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's not 3%, 4%, it's a really big chunk of our budget.
And I think the other thing that we really need to consider is that the longer we.
Jen, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
And also, sorry, let me direct you, but also, it's, it's something that we cannot necessarily plan for year by year. Like, I mean, if.
You're already in the home.
Yeah, if, if in fact other departments do have these types of mandates, they at least know what they're going to be every year and they can say, okay, if, if in fact they're required to have X number of officers, et cetera, they can say, okay, we know what their, their pay scale is and blah, 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 and we know exactly what it's going to be, meanwhile, we sit here and four kids move into town and it's an extra $700,000.
It happens every day.
And so it's, you know.
And you, there are certain situations that we cannot control and there are certain needs of students that we would not be able to support here in district. But the more we continue to take away from the general education classroom and the supports for students before you get to that IEP process, the more those special education numbers are going to continue to climb.
Right.
We're not fixing the root cause.
Right, we're actually adding to the problem.
Yes.
Yes, it's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point. Okay, anything else on that? All right, let's move on to virtual meeting options with Karen.
Hi.
Hi.
I have no idea why I'm here, I think somebody asked about virtual meetings, so we used to do them and then Joe told us to stop, so we stopped. So if we wanted to do virtual meetings again, we can do it, it's totally up to you.
Did Nick ask the question? Should we?
I think so, because the select board.
I had asked too.
Right, the select board does it, so then.
What a presentation!
And then they always complain that I'm too long, so I'm trying to get along. So here's the thing, I did talk to Jason Benjamin.
Hey, Karen, before you move too, too far into it, I'm asking, Sherry, should we maybe table this till Nick is back? Because I.
Well, Karen just sat through this whole thing.
Oh.
She's going to stay regardless.
I think Nick and I had the question because we see it on social media and there were people asking, you know, because it'd be easier for them to attend if they could, if it was livestreamed or whatever. So I had asked Jen to look into what it would cost, how it could be done.
There are definitely some considerations because we did have some issues in, in past years, but we can absolutely come back to the next meeting.
I guess one thing to investigate, maybe somebody knows this, but if we just livestream a meeting, like, just livestream, does that violate like open town meeting?
So that's what, that's what I asked to get.
Because I know like, it was, it was frustrating when we were meeting virtually to carry on the conversation, someone raises their hand, someone has a weird background that draws your attention or something like that.
Like an outer space.
Or a bird.
See, I don't understand why, but why could the select board do it, like, go back to pre-COVID, right, when they met in that, that selectman's room?
Yeah.
They would always be live on Norton Media, always.
Well, that's the thing is.
And there was no interaction.
That's, I guess that's the root of my question is, can we just livestream so people can be sitting at a soccer game or sitting at their kitchen table?
So when you.
So is that a question for Norton Media?
So, no, so I actually, it was, it's part of open meeting law and, and the regulations. So the, technically, no one has permission to speak unless the chair so grants. I don't, you don't, these guys don't.
Ugh.
So Sherry really runs this whole table and we've always been much more casual than that. But therefore, no one really, if they were, if we were livestreaming it, no one, unless Sherry said, does anyone in the audience, you know, have a question? It is what it is.
So you're saying we could livestream then?
We could, I think we would really need to keep an eye on like the Q and A box because we have always in the past allowed people to make a statement or ask a question about anything that has been on our agenda. That's kind of how we've handled this, the open meeting law and the public comment.
Yeah.
Piece. What we ran into previously is because we have such a large deaf and hard of hearing community here in Norton, is that we were not, we were providing closed captioning, which we could do, we wouldn't have to necessarily pay someone to do that, and we were also providing an ASL interpreter, so that.
Who half the time couldn't hear us on the Zoom.
Yes, that was a huge problem when it came to the microphones. Again, the guidance says that we must provide access for families that have a particular need with reasonable notice. So right now, if a family wanted to come and, and sit tonight and they needed an interpreter, we would need to know that ahead of time in order to have someone here to support that request. So it would probably be the same.
Well, because I guess like the one, the one issue with our current setup and system is if someone in their free time watches this meeting and has a question about some, like an MCAS question, we might not be having MCAS on our next meeting. So that's, you know, potentially, you know, someone, a constituent problem. So we're like behind, we're almost like not giving them a chance to have any input because we're not livestreaming. But, and then the other part is the whole livestreaming.
Yeah.
You know, someone to watch the comment box and the, you know.
Yeah, someone would have to do that actively while we were sitting here.
So I'll just say this while I, while I, again, I think we should table this.
Yeah.
Till, till Nick is available. My, my solution for that would be that the person can reach out to Jen, Brian, whomever directly, if they, if they truly have a question, if they, if their intent is that they want to be seen by the public, then that's something, that's a different story, but if they, if they have a question and they want answered, I feel like everybody's open to, you know, to communication, so.
I think it just became a convenience thing, right, through COVID?
Sure.
Where people, we had way, way more people in attendance, the majority of our meetings. So, but I think maybe let's just table it and, because I know Nick definitely wanted to hear about that too, so.
So we'll move it to the December meeting, absolutely.
The next meeting, okay. So I guess that's what, you know, costs, you know, associated costs that would go along with this, you know, but I think you answered the open meeting law.
Yeah.
And, okay. All right, so we'll do that then. Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, is there any other business?
I just wanted to update on the CPAC, they're doing their Penguin Patch on December 16th from 10 to 1 at the LG and that's where you can bring your kids and they can go shopping for little trinkets and then they come, they get it all wrapped and then they bring it back to you, so they give you something for the holidays. So the CPAC is looking for wrapping paper donations and if anybody's available to do that, you can give them to your school administration and they will pass it along to them.
So wrapping paper can go to any school?
You can, yeah, just bring it into like the secretaries right when you walk in and they save them.
Do they need, when do they need it by?
The event is on December 16th, so anytime before then.